Yeah.
You know, you all, you know, sure.
Me.
Sure.
I don't know.
Yeah, we're using the ball and stuff like that.
Let's, let's, let's be thorough too, Rob. I mean, Fox, we're, uh, I mentioned a couple of industrial complex.
We used to have, uh, there's, uh, we put in that, uh, we had the ball and stuff.
Always, I mean, that, that, that.
Years and years.
We did it all over here for a little bit.
Oh, yeah, I don't, yeah, the ball is way for me to, to, to.
Richmond?
Green Mall. Now, what do you think about it?
It's in charge.
Yeah, I believe it. You like the most.
It's just, um, maybe not.
You were in it.
I didn't know you were.
I don't know. Cause by accident.
And they're going, so we prove that. They're a little bit rude. Yeah, college students. Better, uh, we should do that, we should take up that building.
And you said, oh, you know, it's all, they all, I would think. A lot of it, it's all, uh, it's called. Yeah, they were, they were like talking, we want this match, mom. Well, they, they, they were.
Yeah, I'm listening.
The ball is, uh, uh.
But they're, uh. And this one, I didn't see this. The planning director, the, the, the. The. May I have the research, the, uh, from there, from there, see? The.
Yeah, 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 well, see how the company, oh, no, nobody's pursuing. Why are y'all waiting to do what they're supposed?
I have a score, I'm doing, uh, I just get more, I don't need it.
I'm trying, man. I call down every day, told them, told them, told them, oh, shit. I just, I was going to school, yeah.
I've done quite a little bit.
Well, that's how, it's a question.
How come you haven't?
I'm sorry.
He just wanted to make sure.
Right.
Miss Dean?
I don't have the, this is, uh, yeah, my thing. She was like. It's not, it's not, it's not, it's not. Beautiful. Yeah, everybody all, four of us too, and y'all, two, yeah, as long as y'all.
Okay, let's get started, uh, and we'll work to make everybody, can y'all hear everybody from the back? Uh, we have, uh, the active storage here, and they want to go over the unit, I understand, so why don't we let y'all come on first?
Um, I don't think Ms. Lee is gonna make it tonight, so Johnny and I are gonna approve the board amendments from November 6th, uh, when we had the ethics meeting. Um, I make a motion to approve the board minutes as second, okay? So, we don't need to read them, right? If anybody wants to copy, they can.
Yeah, you say stuff to y'all.
Everybody say all in favor.
Okay, all in favor? Okay.
Hey, is that ethical?
Well, you want to, you want to.
Thank y'all.
You guys do a small bit for me.
Yeah, do a motion, do a adjourn, adjourn the meeting.
I'll move to adjourn it. I second. Okay.
Okay, workshop, uh, December 12th, 2019. First time on the agenda.
Don't let, let, let's see more sponsorship.
Okay, usually the year that we have them out, so, uh, we need a motion to approve or shut them out.
That's true. Yeah, it's just the work session.
Oh, okay.
We normally have sponsor, the, the, still our sponsorship. We go on to the next item?
Yeah.
Um.
How much is this thing?
It's $20. Can we call this to the state about the water cuts?
Yes, back some time ago, the water cutoffs were changed, um, to after five days, um, on, at, if you don't pay your bill on the sixth day, that your water is cut off. Is that correct? Am I saying that correct?
Um, yes, it's always been like that. I don't know how long it's been in place like that.
Well, do you know where it was changed from when it was 30 days opposed to the five days?
Oh, years ago, I think.
Because everywhere that I've looked, it's still the 30 days. I cannot find where it was changed and I, and I'm, because it's important because I'm trying to, um, get a different cutoff date. Um, I wanna, I'm gonna start putting in the ear of everybody that, um, I don't think that five days is, ain't enough time for some people that are on fixed incomes. Um, I have heard that, well, uh, people, if you're on fixed income, then, uh, you should make arrangements to be able to pay that bill. Normally, I would say that's correct, um, but most people, like if you have a person that's on disability and they're making less than $1,300 a month, and it's an elderly person, and they get sick, and guess what? They gotta buy extra medication and things like that, and there are times that everybody has had expenses that they weren't expecting. I think five days, I know that six day is awful. I think that people should be given a little bit of more time. Our citizens deserve better than that. Um, basically, I just want, I'm putting it out there because I, it's something that I'm gonna keep pushing and pushing and pushing until we can change that.
I thought it used to be 30 days.
It was, but I can't seem to find that where it's changed.
Mike, is there a procedure for dealing with somebody that is in, uh, a difficult situation?
Um, that's on a one, on one basis, if they have.
No, they contact.
Yeah, they, they come and we try to work with them, talk with them before everything else, but most of the time, some people, they don't come. They'll come until their water gets cut off and then, you know, and sometimes we even work with them on those days also. But, uh, it's a one-on-one case.
Yeah, like, one is a one-on-one case, I still think, I just don't think it's enough time.
But we do have procedures where, um, they have to read meters between the 16 and the 19, and then they go back and reread all the meters, make sure all the reads are correct. And then after that, um, the bill is generated by the end, before the end of the month, so people can get it by, at least by first of the next month, and then pay by the 15 when it's due. And then they have until the 20th to pay before the cutoff, and the cutoff is on 21st, depending where it falls. So, people, sometimes, depending where it falls, they get extra days.
Okay, I'm just, I'm, all I'm saying is that I think our citizens deserve a little bit better than that. Um, I think it needs to be changed, and, uh, I'm, I'm just putting it out there that I'm gonna keep pushing, um, until we can get our citizens better, if they don't know what we're offering them.
Does anybody remember when it used to be a month? A month past due?
I, when I, when I lived in the city.
Not in the last, not in the last 10 years, does it?
Well, that, I just don't understand where it's, where it's been changed. I'd like to, I'd like to know so I can, I almost, I'd just like to see where it was changed. I mean, if you can give me, if you know the information, maybe it's something we can work with in the next week or so, and maybe, you know, even after first year.
I'll try and find it, but, I mean, as far as I know, it hasn't been changed, but there was.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's. Cost me a minute.
Right, but I'm just saying, you say it's not, it's not been enforced, but it's been changed, what did you say?
I said, I mean, that's been, always been that date, however, it was not enforced.
Okay.
Now we enforced it.
Okay, cause one, the last one I saw was 30, 30 days, that's why I'm, I'm just questioning that.
Yeah, but I'll try and find you the.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I mean.
Can I speak?
I'm trying to, try, like, make you speak.
I'll see that, now, this later, uh, Kenny, I would say this, you got 21 days to do it in. Day the bill comes out on the 29th, 30th, so you're five days, you have 15 days to pay, then you got five days, more days before it's cut off.
Okay, I, I, I get that part.
But, and that's 21 days, so long you ask, uh, I would make a suggestion that, uh, on cutoff, and I would like to see it done, uh, Monday through Thursday, which they don't cut off on Friday, if it's the fall, it's on Friday.
That's correct.
To put somebody in here from five, uh, till seven o'clock that night, for somebody that cannot come in here, uh, at, guess how, five o'clock, comes home, the water's cut off, and he can't get back on to the next day. I would like to make a suggestion to y'all as council, that at least somebody stays to seven, one to turn it back on, and one in the office, to give opportunity to get turned back on that night when they find out it's cut off. But on the average, it's only 43 people gets cut off on the average during the month. Twenty four, seven of those are repeaters. So, what you're really, your question, but, uh, and the repeaters don't deserve a chance after, if they know it's gonna be cut off, and they live, and they don't care to be cut off. Uh, so you only have roughly 20 to 24 people that accidentally didn't pay. Okay, take it in. All right, let's move.
Next, we have Gary, please want to talk about city financials?
Good, and y'all, Gary, but well, 2021 Broad Street, excuse me, I got a little cold tonight. If you allow me, I want to get this, get this out, yeah, so you can follow along when I talk about. What I just did, Dave, you, is a revenue expenditure statement. That I thought of, recurrent, state of budget, as of December 6th, 2019. My point in giving this to you is that there's some alarming numbers in this revenue expenditure statement, as I understand it. As of, um, December 6th, 2019, according to the statement, our revenues are, seem significant, whether to be, uh, coming into six months of fiscal year. And what I highlighted, you can see, the numbers are in percentages, seem to be extremely low for six months. Examples that I highlighted include the amount of water that's been built, is currently $174,794. We have projected $867,358, so far, we collected over 20%. That may be only four months worth of collections, but if you divide four into 174, you're gonna come out to roughly $44,000 a month that we collect each month. So, if you add $88,000 back to that, you get six months. There's still less than $300,000 given today. If you double that amount for 12 months, it looks like we may possibly be somewhere in the neighborhood of $340,000 short, just on that one line down. Additionally, if you look at the sewer bill, as of now, we've only collected 12% of what was projected. The statement says that there's $42,009 collected so far, projected was $359,053. The list goes on, water taps, projected $121,000, only $23,652 has been collected. Sewer taps, $247,500, only $49,391. Fines were projected $150,000, only $49,721 has been collected so far. On top of that, we have projected expenditure for water purchase to be at $70,000. Amount spent at this period is $233,068. I can only assume that as we go forward, that we're probably gonna be close to doubling that in the water purchase. We're already at $233,000, six months, are we gonna be at $450,000, $460,000 or so in a year? As it stands right now, we're currently in the red, based upon our projections and what we've actually spent and brought in, by $51,299. It's, it's alarming to me, and my suggestion as a citizen is that we freeze purchases other than day-to-day expenditures in the midst of purchases until we can make sure that we have enough revenue being brought in to cover the rest of this budget. We're unable to use splosh funds for this because our splosh is going onto a bond for the sewer that started in 2012. December 1st, 2012 is the date of the first payment on this. The last day of the payment on this splosh for this bond is June 1st of 2033. So, we're assuming that we're gonna have two more sploshes between now and then, but I'm understanding the last splosh starts in 2018. If it's a six-year splosh, there could be 24, so we'd have to have another splosh to cover this debt loan. The principal in that loan was right around 4.2 million. The interest on that loan was 1.79 million, for a total of roughly a little over $6 million. So, splosh will continue to have to be used for that, that bond, not just now, for what it was funded for, but going forward, in order to make sure the bond is paid. So, it looks like we have some pretty significant, uh, financial issues that we will be facing in the coming years, and I just wanted to make sure that the council is aware of that.
I have a couple of questions, um, for Ms. Chang.
Go ahead.
Are we using the software, number one? We are using the software, are these numbers accurate?
Um, it is accurate, um, like I told Tammy the other day, that I can make these on entries that have not been done yet at the end of the month.
Yeah, I was wondering, two.
Yeah, yeah. But, um, yeah, most of these numbers are accurate.
So, in the water, as of right now, we're at 330, three, 333% over, am I reading?
Water purchase?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, we are, because we've been.
We're six months in.
We've been purchasing water from the county at two, so three dollars and some change, because we have not been generating water from the water plants.
We, we have had a good bit of a turnover in the lake, so relatively, a lot of bad water, I, we cut it back, so that's one reason to do this stuff.
Like, this is something that wasn't expected, but it happens, so.
Yeah, like, I explained, things happen, right? Probably wouldn't be a bad idea to look into freezing, you know, purchases, I mean, something we should think about, I mean.
Yeah, we could, we could do that.
I'm not saying we have to freeze everything, I mean, obviously, we need something, you know, but, you know, as of right now, until we, uh, can look at, you know, cause if we keep having, um, the issue with the water, then it's gonna keep rising. That, that percentage is gonna go up, 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 and then there's not gonna be a limit to it.
Yeah, that's why we have that agreement with the City of Winer, so we can buy some water from them at a lower rate also to help us out, cause right now, only the spring is generating water, so, from us. So, we're purchasing water from the county, then we're trying to buy more from the City of Winer, because their rate is lower than the county. So, they have, um, turned the county down to a really low, as slow as they, we can, so we're gonna be purchasing most of the water from the City of Winer until we get our water plan to, um, the water, we will go back up where it should.
Okay, um, if we, if we don't look at the water, though, why are we so behind on the other numbers, um, in other categories?
You're talking revenue now?
Yeah, um, like business licenses, um, fines.
Now, fines, police are not making that many citations, they're not writing citations that many, so they're not gonna be revenues coming in that much.
Okay, what about sewer? How are we so behind on sewer?
Sewer, I mean, we, sewer is billed according to the water usage, I mean, you can't count the sewer. Whatever we bill for water is billed for sewer, so.
Right, but, but you should have had a real, real accurate number, um, in the budget for the sewer bill, and the income coming in from sewer should have been a very accurate number with the software, the accounting software that we're using. We should have had a really accurate number on the sewer, and, um, it's showing up at 12% when it should be at 40 to 45.
Well, the revenue was based on the 5% increase that we had in July only, and that 5% is what the revenue is in, I mean, as far as billing, these are just billed, it's not collected money. So, the numbers that you're seeing in the revenue section is the bill amount, not the actual water bills that they pay or sewer payments that they pay.
Okay, but, but we shouldn't have more than 30 days of, of, of variance in there, should we?
Um, don't, cause I'm not looking at the one that Gary got, I'm looking at the one I gave Tim, so.
Okay.
Tell me your number. Which is up to six when I got the money.
Water bill, sewer bill. Water taps. Water tap, sewer taps.
I should be in the M10 personnel.
Now, most of the numbers stay the same, there's a few that are different between the dates that I have to resort to. Yeah, but these numbers are, I mean, accurate, I mean, unless we, cause these we don't do the joint entries for, so, what it is, is what it is.
Well, what it is, is a gross miscalculation.
It's what I'm seeing, um, some of these things are, were merely projections, for example, uh, plat fees. Uh, you're assuming that somebody is going to request, uh, the process of doing a plat, in which case, there's a fee involved. Uh, here, uh, we're talking about having projected them, uh, you know, uh, seven, eight years, uh, months ago, and based on the best guess. Uh, you know, as far as, uh, trying to be critical of someone because, uh, someone hasn't come forward and done a plat, uh, is unreasonable. As far as the expectations of being able to produce our own water, uh, you can sit there and say, you should have known eight months ago that, uh, you know, the water was this high. But the problem with that is that we were working under the assumption that we would be producing our own water. It ended up, because of the, uh, the environment, the, the amount of rain and so on, uh, that we felt that we'd be serving our citizens better when we bought, uh, from the county, because it was underwater. And so, we can, we can sit there and say, well, why didn't you project better? Uh, well, sorry, that was eight months ago, and we're, this is today. We were giving the best testaments to, to be able to do that, that were based on previous years.
Right, well, um, the projections are based on actual accounting data. Does anybody remember all of that we had to go through in the budget?
Yeah, it was based on what we see in revenue.
From the year before.
Yeah, and that, and that's what.
So, that's the guesswork out of it.
That's right, and that, those projections were done that way. Uh, and, you know, I, we could say that the, you know, uh, perhaps the, the people in the meeting, uh, would have to be able to answer, including you and I.
Yeah, it does not be an answer.
We did the best we could at the time.
What, what I want to suggest is, uh, you and, you, y'all come in and get with mine, and y'all go over the numbers, and you kind, you want me to do that, something?
We, we have a tendency to like to bring these things in and kind of drop them like bombs, when in reality, we should, if we run across a problem, we should come in and.
If you're a senior, wait, imagine, do that, I did, I was here today as a matter of fact.
Today?
I've been here multiple times, yes, sir.
Okay.
So, please don't incidentally, even if it'll be.
And what resolutions did you come up with at that time?
There was no resolution, I can't come up with a resolution because, I would sit there, I gave it to you for a resolution. You're still in the council, and that's what people tell me every day, so, I don't have a resolution at this point, I'm simply making you aware that your revenues are very low from where they need to be, and if you continue spending, I think we're gonna be in trouble. And just, um, based upon the numbers from last year, I would urge you to go back and look at what you spent on your water last year versus what was projected in this budget.
Sorry.
Okay, next on the, um, I've agenda is Dominique, my following, are you here tonight?
Yes, ma'am. This following, uh, budget concerns.
I guess following budget concerns, it's probably not an appropriate time to introduce a new company that could potentially do some work for the downtown area, but I'll give it a shot anyway. Uh, my name's Dominique, I'm at nineteen thirty Mill Road in State, I've been here since two thousand and nine. Um, I've noticed that the downtown area has grown significantly, a lot more traffic from restaurants and businesses and such in the area, um, and I run the sweeping business. It's a vacuum bagger truck that can come through and pick up debris, trash, leaves, basically any sort of refuse that's left behind by consumers or blown from trees, um, and the normal natural environmental stuff that happens. We run a truck right now, um, that does commercial properties, that does residential HOAs as well as a few, um, industrial centers out in Athens area, so... I gave some information to Sam Powell, um, and had forwarded out an email to him with some of my information, and I dropped off some of my stuff for y'all, and then if anyone on the council would like to speak with me, they can feel free to contact me, and we can discuss, um, the bid that I had done. The proposal was for the downtown area from basically City Hall here, down to the Castro Trading, and then down to the cleaners at the end of the, uh, the old antique, that's now a bed store down there, and then back up and around. And we could do the service as many times or as many times as we'd like. It would also be available for special events after, um, the downtown, uh, festivals that happen and so forth, so I'll hand this over to you guys. I only have one copy of this, I don't know how many people might be here. Give you some nice collection cards.
Are you working with any other cities right now?
Uh, right now, no. Um, right now, we, I run a landscaping business primarily, um, and we added this on for our commercial contracts in some of the big box retail stores that we maintain, um, and I was approached by my neighbor, Jermaine, when...